We'll come to order, I'll call the board to order. First item on the select board agenda, oh, first thing to do tonight. I would like to, before we start, have a moment of recognition, moment of silence for Roman Doviak, our fire chief from 2012 to 2020, who left us last week. So could we just take a few, could we take a moment of silence together to remember Roman? He was a good public servant to Brandon, he was a volunteer and a leader of volunteers, and he will be missed in a big way. Thank you, everyone. So the first item would be to adopt the agenda. Is there any motion from the board?
I move the adopt the agenda.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Giles and a second by Mr. Wyman. Are there any additions or corrections to be made?
I think it'd be nice to talk about meeting format at some point in this meet. It seems timely to bring that up.
Okay, you want to do that maybe around five, one side or the other of number five?
Sure.
Let me do it right after number five then. So that's an item to discuss the select board meeting format going forward. Any other changes to be made? If not, all in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
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 Aye? Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? That's the unanimous vote, so we won't take a roll call on it. Item two is the approval of the minutes of May 11th. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, more.
Mr. Wyman moves to adopt, is that Mr. Coolidge with a second?
Sure.
Mr. Coolidge had a second. Any errors or omissions in the minutes as submitted?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I was informed that Linda Stewart did not attend this meeting via Zoom.
Dave, we can't quite hear you.
I was informed that Linda Stewart did not attend this meeting via Zoom.
Ah, okay.
Correct, she didn't.
You know, sometimes with Zoom, it's a little tricky to tell who exactly, especially if there's a couple, you know, if they're both there, if one of them's there, all that stuff.
I think she's there, and I saw her once, but if she didn't attend, I can pick her off.
Okay, thank you. Any other changes to be made? Other errors or omissions? Thank you for bringing that in, Dave. Okay. If there are not, all in favor of the minutes as just with the minor correction, say aye.
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 Aye? Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it?
Yeah. Doug Bailey's not the abstained.
Doug Bailey abstains?
Correct.
Right, okay. The other four are in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, 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 okay. Thank you. Item three, the town manager's report, Mr. Atherton?
Okay, I'll try to be brief. My report for the weeks of May 11th and May 18th. Segment six, Casellas finished the tree and shrub plantings and continues to top soil and mulch. All of the pavement millings for the crosswalks and the medians have been completed and will be paved and painted this week. And we are still waiting for approval of additional funding from VTrans for the bridge slab repair. So I have no news on that. Park Street, new sewer line installation has been moving along quickly. Sewer line and service connections are currently scheduled for completion by June 20th, so then they'll move on the water after that. Union Street sidewalks done, they just have to line stripe the road. Other things going on, we requested an early start for the Churchill Road culvert with the State River Management. The contractor is sending information to them to get this approval. We're hoping to start next week, actually, so we'll see how that goes. We're continuing to keep the upstairs of the town office close to the public. The town clerk's office has opened to the public by appointment only. And we'll wait on the governor's word on other things for that. And work will begin starting on the Union Street rail crossing. The railroad will be continuing our sidewalk that we just finished there through the crossing to connect to the new sidewalk and then the end of Church Street intersection. This is something that was discussed when we were doing right away on the Union Street crossing that the railroad said they would like to do their own, so we'll see that happen here. It'll be nice to have more sidewalk going in. Rec News, Brandon Rec is working on creating short enrichment camps for kids that are within the COVID-19 regs. Starting June 1st, groups of less than 26 can get together, so hopefully allow for the start of adult activities like cornhole and volleyball. Governor's orders still prohibits organized games that are likely to draw spectators. Once that, the turn of the spirit comes, we will be able to run a baseball season. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for the town manager from the board? Board first. Sorry. Mr. Giles?
Yeah, Dave, I'm curious what criteria you're going to use to decide when to open up the upstairs of the town office?
Well, we don't really want the public coming in if we don't know who they are right now. It really hasn't been a problem.
I'm not suggesting it's a problem.
I don't know, I mean, I don't want people coming in here that we're not familiar with. And, you know, we've kind of kept this pretty tight-knit group of folks that come in here.
I guess I'm curious about the difference between the downstairs and the upstairs, because it seems like the same people that would come in downstairs would be the ones who would come in upstairs.
No, the downstairs sees way more people than we do up here. And, you know, Sue's got title searchers coming in there, people paying taxes and everything. You know, she's doing it by appointment only, and it's pretty limited. Like, she's got a schedule going on, on outlook, with who's coming in at what time, and the door's just not open to the public down there either. She keeps it locked, and when there's an appointment, she lets them in, so we're... Yeah, you know, knock on wood, we haven't had any problems, and we really don't want to start any, so...
Does it make sense to do something similar to what Sue's doing, so someone could make an appointment if they wanted to come up and see upstairs, you know, talk to someone?
I think all of us would rather just have them do it by phone or Zoom. We really haven't had a problem with this up here, so...
I'm not suggesting it's a problem, I'm just wondering what, how we're going to get back to, you know, quote, more normal.
I don't know, I really don't know. I mean, it's all, it's all kind of, we play it by week to see what happens, so...
Other, anything else, Mr. Giles?
No.
I guess, you know, my point of view on that would be it's a managerial kind of decision, and unless we get some, unless we get some public comment to the board that, you know, it's a challenge for access, you know, to get town services, then I'm inclined to leave it up to the discretion of the town manager. It's the office that he's responsible for.
I would agree.
You know, 90% of my job I can do somewhere else other than in this office, so that's the kind of nice thing. And I got to be honest with you, most people aren't coming in to see us. They're emailing us or they're calling us, and it's been that way for quite a while. We don't get a lot of foot traffic up here, so...
Right. Yeah. I think that was my observation, what my feeling was that you don't get very many people needing to come up there, but, which is why it seems like it's unnecessary to not have them come up, that the very few people that might want to, it seems like that would be within the realm of what's allowed right now, you know, with the governor's orders and with businesses opening up and with, you know, small gatherings happening, it wouldn't exceed the numbers. So I'm just, again, I'm curious in so many ways about, you know, how we can slowly turn on the spigot, is what they call it, you know? And this is one small version of that.
Well, I guess I look at it a little different, like, we never really turned it off here. We've provided, you know, we've all been coming to work. We haven't closed this office a single day since it started. You know, we had a skeleton crew for a while, but we've been here doing everything that needs to be done, so... Whether it's here in Central Park or, you know, on a Zoom meeting, that's what we're doing. We're still providing the same friendly, smiley service as we always have, so... It really, I don't think it's affected us that much up here.
Well, I mean, for example, when I wanted to come in and talk to you, I just knocked on the door and I could come in and speak with you. And when Brian Coolidge, you know, is clearly there with you and Doug is there with you, and it seems as few people who would want to come in and talk to you, it seems...
So, well, I'll be blunt with that answer. You were the first selectman, other than Brian Coolidge, that's come in this building since we shut this down, and I am uneasy with us getting together. I, you know, I just, you know, I mean, Brian's a friend of mine, so I see him frequently. And always have, so that makes it a little different. My comfort zone with him is different than some other folks, so... You know, I just don't think we should open it up and have people showing up in the office, because they want to see somebody.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Wyman?
Thanks.
Yeah, Elaine's here, everyone's here. Elaine took a week off on his first fire, but everyone's here. So if people are here, so if someone actually wanted to make an appointment, they could, yeah? Yeah, I mean, I think that's at least a start if somebody wanted to make an appointment at three. You know, if they can't do what they want to do via email, if they could make an appointment to see whomever. Is Bill seeing people? I don't know what he's going with. No?
No.
No? Yeah, my wife doesn't allow me to see other people, but, no, but I mean, I've set up opportunities for people to meet people outside if necessary. Or, like, for instance, we had our pickup for all of our canvases on Friday, and so I left the back of the van open with all the canvases and watched people go in and out. I mean, as far as like access to, Bill's still somewhat full access, but, you know, yeah, we're not having, I'm not hosting anybody in the office, because I don't want to expose Elaine or expose Jackie or Dave to anybody that might, you know... And again, if we're meeting, you know, if I'm meeting with somebody, it's mask on. If you got, if you don't have a mask on, you better be at least 10 feet away from me.
How about Mr. Bailey and Mr. Coolidge? Anything for Dave?
Yeah, I was just wondering, so VTrans hasn't gotten back to us about the slabs, and they're not even giving us a timeline on what they're going to, so we don't even have a timeframe when that project might be.
Nope, I'd be, I would be surprised if it happens this year.
Well, it seems like that was one of my lead points, was that very possible it's not going to be this year?
Well, I don't know. I said I'd be surprised if it doesn't. They're telling me they would have approval for us in June, but the problem is, we're not going to find, you know, Casellas is getting nervous, because they're the ones that are supposed to do it, but they're going to wait around and have their guys not doing it. My concern is we can't leave this intersection like this through another winter. So, you know, something's going to have to be done to fix this intersection regardless, so... I don't know, I, it's crazy, like, this is, I feel like it's Park Street all over again, so...
And then a second, only other second question I had is that our paving that we were looking at doing this year, Park Street Extension and Country Club, is that going to get done at the same time that Park Street is paved? Or are we going to kind of get in the favor to do a couple of things, or is that a separate deal?
We probably won't do it in connection with Park Street. One, because there's stronger funding on the Park Street budget, and then we didn't want to do that. And we got better pricing for asphalt than anyone, or your Kowski's or whatever, so it really doesn't make a difference there. And talked to Pike, and so he's getting pricing together right now, so...
So can I just stop you there? I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm getting an indication that the sound is not good for Charlene to hear.
I'm not hardly hearing anything Doug is saying, and when Dave is looking at Doug, he's muffled too.
Yeah, I don't know, it's kind of a thing where it's, you know, I don't know.
So it's just something to be aware of. So Doug's first question was, well, his second question was about Park Street Extension and Country Club and all that paving, was it going to be grouped in with the Park Street reconstruction? And Dave's answer was no. And the first question Doug had was about the slabs next to the town office, and Dave's answer was basically that they've been unresponsive, but Casellas eager to get it done, and the town's eager to get it done, and he's kind of keeping it in front of VTrans, right?
Seth, I wouldn't say it's been so much unresponsive. They've had many meetings and have not, haven't made a decision yet, so...
That's better, yeah, sorry for my poor paraphrase there. They've been responsive, but the response hasn't been, "Go for it."
Exactly.
Does that cover Mr. Bailey's questions?
Oh, I like the questions, thank you.
Mr. Coolidge?
Nothing.
Nothing for Mr. Coolidge. Bernie Carr, the great, the powerful, "I humble myself before you, I'm sorry if I offended you before."
Sorry I jumped the gun. Hey, Davey, on the imprinted crosswalks, do they have a white stripe on either side of them? Can you turn around and look in, can you look on the little map there behind you? Does that show them there?
They're going to be, they're going to be delineated, yes.
Perfect, good, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
You should know that from being the P.I.
Oh?
Oh, I did, but changes have occurred in the past.
And I've been telling everybody for two years, three years, that they were going to have
various ability to see the crosswalk with the imprint on it. You have the shadow, plus you have the white lines, plus you have the change in color and texture. But I wasn't seeing the white lines being done, so I just wasn't sure if it was just coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. Other questions for the town manager from the public who is here tonight? I really only see a few, I'll call names. Barry, Barry, anything for Dave? No? Brent Buehler, anything for Dave? Not hearing anything. Lee Cars, anything for Dave?
No, thank you.
Okay, so we'll go ahead on to number four, which is public comment and participation. I have nothing that's not on the agenda tonight. How about the other select board members? Mr. Wyman?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Giles, deep in your head, no? Brian?
Nope.
Doug?
No.
Okay, so any public comment or participation? This is open agenda items, members of the public who are here tonight. Yeah, Barry? Yeah?
Yeah, just, nothing really new to report as far as activity or directions with respect to the school district. You know, people are pretty much looking to close out the year and raise the flag and say success based on what we were challenged with. But the board looking forward into September, trying to do some scenario analysis to figure out full return to service, 100% remote instruction, or any kind of hybrid in between, what that might entail, what the benefits are, what the costs are. But it's all really still around forward-looking and forward-thinking, no real decisions or directions.
Thank you for that update. I think it's with like so many things that there's, there's a lot of decisions to be made, but there's probably not right now enough information to make them all correctly. You know, I think that we just have to wait and see with a lot of these things, but I'm sure that they're making plans for various contingencies, it sounds like. So thank you for that. Other public comment? Okay, if not, we'll move along. We do have a discussion about S344. It's something we talked about at the last meeting. This is, it allows select boards to make some changes to municipal property tax, you know, extensions, deadlines, penalties, that kind of thing. And I'm so glad we have our town clerk and treasurer here on the call tonight. So Sue gave us an update like last Thursday about how collections did go, but rather than me interpret that, maybe, Sue, are you available to kind of debrief us? Brief us, I guess?
Well, I obviously, I don't have any of the information in front of me that I sent to you, but it's, the difference between last year's collections and this year's is quite unremarkable. There's not, I mean, there's a few more people who pay, who have paid late, but it's just a handful, small percentage. And the folks that were on it were, I mean, some of them were the regular people who are always late, and some, there was a few new ones, some people that I didn't expect would pay late, so I'll wait and see how that sugars out, but, so it's not a large, it's not a large percentage of people who are paying late.
So just to restate the info that Sue sent us, it appears that there was about $25,627 more that went delinquent this year than last year, 25,627. And that represented an increase of 0.41% over the previous year's dollar amount. So we're talking about, talking about a less than a half a percent increase in the delinquency amounts.
Not a big amount.
Not a big amount. And, and this part wasn't, I don't think, in what you sent us, Sue, but the number of taxpayers, you don't expect that that's a huge increase?
I, not really, I didn't actually count those up. It's, I have to actually sit down and count them, and I did not do that, so...
But we do see in the warrant tonight, there's the, the transfer to the school district is there, and we've got apparently cash on hand to cover it.
Yep.
Yes. Good, great news, thank you.
Yep.
So what's, what's the pleasure of the board regarding this S344? Is there any suggestion on action? Anybody think action is needed? Anybody think it's not needed? Anybody?
I guess I'd like to just weigh in and say that from everything I've been able to tell in reading all the stories and listening to economists, the full damage of this pandemic to the economy is still yet to be seen. And from it looks, it looks like S344 is written to allow us to make a choice anytime up to, you know, January 1st, 2021. And so I think it might, it seems important that we just keep paying attention, and then if the economic devastation starts to run through Brandon in a bad way, we could step in and do action then. But I guess it's my feeling that it doesn't seem apparent that there needs to be any action now.
I would agree. I think that it's a tool that I'm glad the legislature and the governor have created for the towns. But, you know, just because they've given you the hammer doesn't mean that you have a nail to drive in at this particular time, right? So we may in fact have a nail to drive in sometime before January, but it looks like right now, for the fiscal year that's ending, the town is in about the shape that the town would be in a normal year. So I think maybe we better, I think we would be well advised to just kind of keep this in our toolbox as something that we might call upon later in this year if we find that the first quarter payments come in, you know, late, or the second quarter payments of the next fiscal year don't come in on, you know, there's difficulties maybe between, Sue had mentioned, maybe we weren't even going to be able to make the usual schedule of payments, because the state's not going to set the homestead, homestead refunds until August instead of July, something like that?
Yeah, they extended the due date for tax returns to July 15th, so that means they're going to be late getting us the education tax. Again, we don't know where that's going to fall. I meant to ask Barry earlier if he knew anything about the education tax rate, because I think that's still up in the air. And we'll be lucky if we can, I mean, I'm hoping we can get bills out by August 1st, but it's going to be difficult.
And our first due date is August 15th?
Yeah, generally August 15th, but if we, we'll have to ask, by statute, it's going to be 30 days, so it would have to, it'd probably be falling on September 15th this year.
And is that something, like, is the first due date needing to be 30 days after the billing? Is that something that just automatically it would advance on its own because of that requirement? Or we would have to vote to change the due date?
Well, I think we've done that in the past when we were late with a bill once, so I'm thinking that the statute overrides that, because in statute it says that people have to have it for 30 days, so...
Good.
Probably don't need that bill to alter a due date.
Great. Other comments? Barry, Barry, yeah?
Just, just for Sue, with respect to that, Sue, if there's any detail or specific that you need information about, I think Brenda Fleming would be the perfect person to get a hold of.
Thanks, Barry, yeah. I'm in touch with her a lot, so we communicate pretty regularly.
I would hesitate to offer anything, because she would truly be the person that would be in the know.
Yeah, thanks.
And thanks, I want to thank you, Sue, from the board, for providing the updates as we were getting close to the fourth quarter due date, and also for all the work that you've done so that the town was in a position, cash flow-wise, that we were able to meet the school obligation. And also for your forethought in, you know, considering keeping open the line of credit that we have for segment six, and maybe seeing about renewing that for, and tax anticipation purposes, should things go a little bit tricky in the future. So thank you. Tim?
Yeah, I just thought, since we have Sue here, and since she's likely to be the first-order person to see problems as they start to grow, I'm curious if she has any comment or suggestion or a sense of a need that might be coming up that it would just be great to have her comment while she's here with us.
I don't have anything specific, really, but I think, I feel a little bit like the worst is yet to come. I think people have been, I know a lot of people took their money from the federal government and paid their taxes with it. That's now done and gone. I feel like if it's going to get bad, it's going to get bad later and not now, if that makes any sense, so... But I'll keep my ear to the ground, and we do have a lot of conversations with people, Luanne and I, so we're often, we have the pulse sometimes, so I'll keep my ear to the ground.
Thank you. Any other comment on this, at this time, on the S344 provisions?
Yes, Brent Buehler here. I'd like to just thank you all for the updates, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brent. Okay, so we'll go along then to the new item, which is to consider the select board meeting formats going forward. So we started this, and we started the Zoom meetings in March, when, when there were restrictions placed on public gatherings. And right now, the restriction is 10, I believe, but the governor has indicated that he broadly expects that by June 1st, the public gathering limit will go from 10 to 25, right? So that's the framework we're discussing it in. So I'll open it up to the board for their comment. This is something Mr. Giles raised, so maybe Mr. Giles wants to introduce the conversation?
Yeah, I'd love to jump in here. It's, I think we're all in the same boat, with just having a lot of new information coming at us regularly, and, you know, having ratcheted up our sense of what it means to go into a stay-at-home order. I was certainly reluctant in the beginning, and, and so I understand how much we've all had to change. And yet it seems like the governor is cautiously opening up the state more. And, you know, I'm impressed to see more stores open. And when I go in, I'm sometimes surprised at how many people have varying levels of mask-wearing and what's considered okay. And so I think I'm just interested in having a conversation about, you know, how we mirror the efforts of the state in slowly opening the spigot to get back to normal. And I might add, just because I'm kind of kicking off this conversation, that I understand that the Pittsburgh Select Board is doing in-person select board meetings. And then anybody who wants to participate participates through Zoom, and thus they limit the number of people that come to their meeting to less than 10, so they meet the governor's guidelines. But they have, you know, full public access through the Zoom feature. And I think that that might be an interesting middle step to consider for us if we're interested in that.
Tim?
Yes?
Information that I had told you? Because when I was talking to you, I was referring to the Pittsburgh Planning Commission, not the Select Board.
Then, I, I had thought it was a Select Board, so I'm not sure if their Select Board is meeting that way.
I don't think they are. I don't think they are. I don't think they've been meeting, and the Planning Commission is a small group, and they are having their first in-person meeting, well, actually, this Thursday, and it only includes the members, myself, and the zoning administrator.
Right, thanks.
I guess my question would be, is there a problem the way we're doing it? And what's the problem with the way we're doing it at this point in time, other than we can't be in person, face-to-face?
I guess I'm thinking, just trying to return towards normalcy, and it seems like steps moving in that direction as the rest of the state moves in that direction is reasonable. I find these Zoom meetings to be imperfect and lesser than in-person meetings. So I would like to see a seven-person meetings when we can.
Others on the board with some views? Or members of the public, for that matter?
I would say that I would prefer to have some in-person meetings soon, if we get so the state is allowing 10 to 25. I don't know why we couldn't possibly use the upstairs of the town hall. It still has ventilation with windows open and things, and we could hold a meeting there and still have people Zoom in if they wanted to.
Did I see Sue Gage? Yeah?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to clarify the reason we opened as we have. The governor opened up lawyers and realtors some time ago, like, maybe four weeks ago, and as soon as they started going back to work, they were looking for records from us, and Luanne and I spent every day, eight hours, 10 hours a day, scanning and setting them records, to the point where we said, we can't, we don't have enough time in the day to get this done. So that's why we opened the way we did. Honestly, my inclination is, I'm probably going to keep our door locked for the next, till next spring, and just work by appointment only. I'm not going to let people wander in. I'm pretty nervous. I'm nervous about Jeff. He visits a lot of towns. When he's in the office, I'm making him wear a mask to his dismay, but that's just the way it is. Everybody who comes in and spends any time in the office has to do a health survey before they enter, or upon entering, they have to complete a health survey, and for me, that's, if anything happens, it's at least a point of contract tracing. So there's a lot of steps that go into letting people in the office. I think we have to clean all the time. We clean before everybody comes in, we clean after someone leaves and before someone else comes in. It's a lot more work for us. I think that we still need to take this very seriously. So I'm not 100% comfortable with a lot of people in the office, so, I mean, as far, I think, I'm still going to maintain minimal contact personally. I just wanted to weigh in with that. That's it.
Thank you, Sue. Others?
Sure.
Yeah.
Seth, I'm, you know, I've discussed this with you before, not formally, but I'm not in favor of us opening up the town hall for a public gathering. I think we need to be the ones setting the precedent on how things are rolling, and, you know, we could have, we could easily have something on our next agenda that 30 people would want to show up for. And I don't think it's a good idea to do that with a public, you know, in a public building with, you know, like I said earlier, with Tim's conversation on the town office. It's different when we've sort of had this tight-knit group here, you know, meeting daily, and, you know, and even we've been distancing, so I, I'm, I would like to wait to see what happens before we have public meetings with the doors unlocked and people coming in the buildings. I don't think it's a good idea.
Just to be clear, that's not what I'm suggesting. I'm not suggesting we open the door and say, everybody come on in. I'm suggesting that we have the 10-person maximum, that we basically do what you and Brian and Doug are doing now. I mean, you're there, less than six feet apart, with no masks on, and.
I know, and it's, you know, like I said, and I don't want to pick on Doug, but it's been Brian and I in here forever, and, you know, it's like, but if someone else comes in, well, yeah, but Tim, you, I have a friendship relationship with Brian, too, that.
Friendship actually is not the qualification for what determines whether you wear a mask.
I'm not going to argue with you about it. I just don't think it's a great idea, if my opinion means anything on it. I probably will Zoom into the Select Board meetings if there's a Select Board meeting at the town hall.
And I'm going to chime in there, too. I'm not in favor of it, and I probably will Zoom in if there's a Select Board meeting. I've got a young, I've got grandkids, and I've gotten, finally gotten so I can see them, and I'm not going to jeopardize that, so I can go sit in a town meeting, and with, when it does open up to 25 people or 10, I'm going to sit right here in my office, and I can do everything that needs to be done from right here.
No, I hear you. I mean, that's why I'm bringing the conversation up. I mean, at some point, the state's going to open up, and we're going to start easing back, and, you know, it's just interesting to know when that's going to happen.
Did Barry Varian have something? Yeah?
Just to share, maybe another perspective, I obviously don't have a say or a vote in what your decision would be here, but I've come to most Select Board meetings in the past year, and I've enjoyed doing that, and I would enjoy continuing to do that, but my comfort level isn't there. If that was the direction the Select Board meetings would take, I probably would not come.
At this point, it seems to work fine, right? I come here, I have no issues doing the Zoom or not being open at this point. I think we can stay this way, because things are still getting done.
I have a little bit of a shade of distinction position on this, I guess, which I have passed by Tim. I'm not sure that we would be really in the spirit of open meeting law if we all, as a board, met face-to-face and allowed the public only to participate by telephone or Zoom. It just doesn't feel like we're subjecting the board to the same requirements that the public is being subjected to, if that makes sense to you guys. My personal preference is a little bit also colored by an experience I had yesterday. I won't exactly say where I was, but you'll all know where I was. It was a Sunday morning at 11 o'clock, for the first time in nine weeks, right? And I was really, really quite disappointed how very few people wore a mask, and of those people who wore masks, how very few of them kept their masks on. It's just, I felt very much like I was subjecting myself to a lot of people's personal health choices that were putting me in a bad place. So I'm not in a hurry, I guess is what I'm saying. I do think that we've been getting the work done. I think it does take a little bit more, you know, calling of roles and stuff like that to make sure that we're all, you know, being heard and checking with technology and microphones, but I'm not in a big hurry to open to the public and to Tim's intermediate step, which I think is a creative idea. I just don't know that I have 100% of feeling that that really meets the spirit of the open meeting law in terms of public participation at board meetings. Sue, is there a comment?
Yeah, I just, too, Tim was talking about the governor opening up the state. He may be opening up the state, but I feel it's for political reasons. I can tell you, my daughter works for the state, and the state itself is not opening up. They are, she has strict instructions, you're working from home, and so he may be opening up the state for everybody else, but the state employees themselves are not, they are all at home, and they are not opening up, and they're, and not even in the, I mean, there's not even a date, so I think we have to be careful what we hear from him publicly versus how they're actually operating, too, just to weigh that in.
Thank you, Sue. Any other comments? Bernie? Yeah?
I think you're going to find that this pandemic's going to change a lot of lives and the way we do business as normal. I go to a meeting over in Randolph for the Vermont Association of Chamber Executives four times a year, and we've been doing those via Zoom, and they've dragged us, baby boomers clicking and screaming, into a little more of a technological, technological, technological savvy way that we have been fighting for many years. That does a lot of things. It saves gas, it reduces my carbon footprint, it keeps me healthy by not being with them. I mean, there's a lot of things. I think you might see going forward, more Zoom meetings in five years even, we'll still be doing Zoom meetings, because they realize, why make somebody drive from Bennington three to four times a year to do business that they can do over the phone? So I, no one's more social than me, and I miss people. I miss my family, I miss my friends, but until we get a vaccine, until we get something that's a little more concrete, I think it's a very low price to pay to continue on with the way that Vermont is doing and being so successful in doing it. So I would agree that I think we should stick with the Zoom meetings until something more concrete rises to the surface and gives us all the ability to take a little better breath and feel more safe.
Thank you. Any other comment on this? Is the board comfortable, then, that the consensus is that we, it sounds like three of us would prefer to stick with Zoom meetings at this point? Would be comfortable, like, just leaving it until we discuss it and change it again?
Sure.
That sound good? Okay.
Seth, I, I've been looking at, actually, I was just doing this while we were sitting here, because I have a conference phone in here, see if they made a conference microphone for Zoom that would plug into my computer, so if there are three of us or four of us in the room, just the way it happens, that we can space it out a little bit more, and there's some on Amazon, I just looked at, so I'm going to see if we can actually do, like, daisy chain, and we get a couple of the folks have to meet here or in a building, will have good sound for them to do it. I don't know about video yet, it just might be one big picture, but we'll look at something. If it comes to that, I would rather not have people in this building meeting, I guess. Have them next door.
So thank you for considering that. So just to confirm, though, you have, you guys, you three in that room, you can hear everything fine?
Oh, yeah.
You all can? Okay.
It's just I have to move the computer around, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Item six is kind of fun, consider purchase of a storage building for the highway department. Dave gave us a memo with some site photos and a map and all kinds of stuff, including estimates, so thank you, Dave, for all the preparation and all of the background, so that we're not coming into this totally blind. Want to go ahead and tell us about what you're considering?
Sure. So, let me get closer, so Charlene can hear me. So, as you know, we had an issue last year where the league said that the old building, the red brick with the white structure attached to it, was deemed uninsurable down there because it's falling apart. And so, you know, building a new town garage right now would be way out of our budget. So Sean had started looking at some of these, you know, the Quonza Hut type white structures that sit on the concrete blocks, and got, well, the three quotes we have, and, you know, looking at sizes and pricing and everything, and they're, one of the companies he looked at, it's like a 20-year warranty on these things, and then we can move them, you know, if we decide that someday we want to build a new highway department, we can use this for a salt shed when we build a new building, you know, there's, it's kind of versatile. And it's fairly inexpensive for a structure to put our equipment in that we pay a lot more for, you know. We have a grater that sits outside that's brand new, it's a little silly. And the concern is, if this building isn't insurable, what happens to the contents if the building decides to fall down? So it's, if you ever go down there and visit, you can see it's well overdue that something needs to be done there, and this is quite an inexpensive way to do it. So that's what we're looking at. And the 40-by-80 structure is the one that we would prefer, because we would be able to get the majority of our outside, maybe all of our outside equipment in it, and our signs and everything else.
So can I ask a question, Dave? I'm looking at the site plan that you gave us.
Yeah.
Which is this one, I think. Are the buildings you're talking about being uninsurable, are they the ones that would be on the left side as you're coming in the driveway? I guess I should turn it like this. So you come in in the driveway.
Yep.
These are along the property line, almost?
Yep. Yep.
And then is the location of the proposed building, is it this other dotted blue line, or is that something else?
Yeah, I tried doing it with the ANR map, and it, you know, it's definitely not to scale, but that's the proposed area. Those are just trailers down there from probably when Alpine was down there. So it's that area right there where we would do it. And then that little building just north of where I have the dotted rectangle, that was going to, that's that old sign shed that's falling apart, so.
So we would have the one new structure, more or less where the blue outline is, and then the main highway barn, which is near the road, and then this, is this, this is the salt?
The salt sheds next to it, yeah.
This is the salt, yeah.
Yeah. We're actually, Sean and I were discussing this, if we were to do this and take down the white structure where the, you know, because the red and white building, it's a concrete block part, which isn't bad, if we eliminated the white structure, if that red building would be insurable, so I'm going to reach out to the league this week and find out if that's the case, so. Because it does have heat in it, and it's a concrete floor, it's definitely not square or flat at all, but we're just, because I know they're listing it all as one, so if we take the, take the bad part off, maybe we can save the good part. It's worth asking a question, so.
That's what I was just going to ask you.
Yeah.
That was the original garage, correct?
I believe so. Way before my time, Tracy, but I think so, yeah.
Yeah, pretty sure it was.
Yeah. Oh, it definitely was before my time.
The other question I got on your, is that the plastic covering on that one with the concrete block?
It's like the one that Loz just put down there. It's a big, white dome-shaped, well, it looks like your garage, but it's that vinyl, whatever it is, yeah.
Is that, what's the life expectancy on that?
Well, they give them a 20-year warranty on it, so.
That's the one they're giving 20 years on?
Yeah, and the guy's in Vermont, I think he's up in, like, Craftsbury or somewhere like that, so.
Yeah.
You know, we could look at, just wanted to pave the floor at some point in it, who knows, you know, but if it's just going to be storage, we can just gravel it and be done with it, but it'd just be nice that we could recycle it later if we had to, when we can build a new highway garage, you know, we could use it for a salt shed, so.
Other comment, questions?
I think it's a great building. I think it's a great, a great start to what we need. My only question would be, we're looking at buying it now, and what money do we have now to do that?
That's the, that's the loaded question, I guess. We're going to see if we can find finance, or we'll find money in our budget to purchase it, so. Looking at it a couple ways, it's like, well, we've got an uninsurable building, that if something happens, we're kind of SOL on equipment in it, or do we spend, what was it, $37,000 to do it? So we'll see what we can come up with. If we can't do it this year, we can't do it this year, but it certainly would be nice to be able to, so. I think we can find a way.
Can we at least, can we at least plan on tearing down the other, the other section that's against that garage, if your insurance is, if they'll insure that other garage?
Well, I'm going to ask the question before we do, and if, I mean, if that gives us 50% of our building covered, it's certainly worth it, so.
Sue Gage had a contribution?
Yeah, I think, I think we could, I think we're going to have some savings in our budget that would cover that in various departments, but, I mean, it's the bottom figure. But, um, I mean, it's, it's the bottom figure that we're concerned about. So I, I feel like there's some areas of savings in other departments that could combine to, um, finance that, you know, with the current budget.
Yeah, I think if we take a look at it and see if we, obviously if we can't make it work, we're not going to do it. But I, I think we can be resourceful and creative and find a way.
I would like, I would like to propose that we, you know, really think hard about this because I, I think it's a great building and it would be really plus to have. And we're coming into the end of the budget. So I think if we spend the next couple of weeks, if Sue and Dave were able to target where we might come in at the end of this year, that it's a real possibility. There, there has to be some savings we have in personnel and things this year. So we're, I don't, I mean, I'm not sure where we're at, but I think we're under.
May I ask a question? Uh, Brent Buehler here. Brent Buehler here. Do, do I recall a discussion about some of this operations being moved up towards Arnold District Road? And how does, how does that, this tie in with that? The buildings look great. I mean, I, I think they look fabulous. So I'm just curious how, what's the long-term plan was? Or am I mistaken about the Arnold District Road?
We, um, we don't own any land on Arnold District except for where our solar area is. So we would have to acquire property from the Brandon Industrial Corp. in order to do that.
Okay. Do, was there a conversation about moving some of the operations somewhere else at one point because of?
I don't think.
Erosion or something?
I don't think there was ever a select board discussion about it. I think it was discussed with employees, but.
Oh, okay.
We would have to go together, we'd have to have a public vote to buy land. So.
Okay. I, I, I might be mistaken. Thank you.
So Dave, uh, what are you looking for from the board? Are you looking for a yes, if kind of a motion?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's over my, my spending limit. So I would need a motion to, um.
Is there a motion from the board, uh, to support one of these quotes? To approve one of these quotes, um, in a subject to funding in the current budget or something like that?
Make that motion, uh, from the, from Greg Lucier. An amount of $36,901.
Mr. Wyman made a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second for Mr. Coolidge. Is there a discussion? So that's to go with the 40 by 80 foot concrete mount superstructure, uh, installed. And I guess the town provides the concrete blocks. Is that right, Dave?
Yes, we do. And we have some down there, so we'll, we just have to pick up a few more. And our guys will prep the site too. So the only thing this guy will do is come down and set it up. So we'll have the rest of the work done in-house.
Further discussion?
Is this motion to commit to this right now or to commit to look at it seriously to see if we have the money?
It would be to, I guess, to commit to it if between Sue and Dave that we do have, if, if we have the money. If the funds are available.
If, yeah. That, that's how I understood the motion, that, that we're supporting it as long as there's funds available in the current year budget.
So I would say that.
Or is that too narrow?
This wouldn't, this building wouldn't be done until after the end of the fiscal year anyway. So we would try to do it as, um.
Between the two years?
Well, what do we call it? I can't even think of the name of the month, the thing that one we hold.
An encumbrance?
Thank you. An encumbrance. We'd probably do it that way anyway. So, um, and if we can't encumber it, then we'll have to budget it for the following year. Next year, 18 months.
So the, uh, we do have to have a, a legal motion that, uh, covers all the bases here. So is the motion to approve the $36,901 quote from Greg Lucier for the 40 by 80 building, subject to an encumbrance from the current year's budget and money available in next year's budget? Being able to fund that? Does that meet everybody's approval?
Yes. Yes.
Tim? Yeah, makes sense. Doug Bailey there?
Yeah. Yeah. I, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm just, as I say, I'm only concerned with wanting to know that we've, we've got the funds before we commit to it. That's all.
Yeah, I think that that's, uh, I think that's clear if we make the motion in that way.
I mean, we, we had talked previously about having, uh, leftover funds this year go into the, uh, our reserve because our reserve was a little lower than we had felt it was supposed to be. So it, you know, I, I would just like to know. Um, I guess, I guess my, my conservative side says it. I'd rather see where the money is before we do the vote. But I'm, I'm happy anyway. The majority of the board wants to go. I'm very happy about the building and, and that's what I feel we should, should do.
Point, point well heard. Uh, other, others with views? If not, are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? That was unanimous? That was unanimous. Okay. Thanks, Dave, for getting that information.
Thank you, guys. I, you know, I, I do wish that we were able to budget this for the year, but we didn't know that it was going to be deemed uninsurable. So sorry for springing that on everyone.
Yeah, we, we have found in the past that sometimes capital planning, you know, it's good as far as it goes. But sometimes it doesn't, you know, account for all the contingencies, like the insurance company telling you, you can't stick around with this building anymore.
Right. Right. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so item seven, uh, and then we do have a, we have a sewer meeting after this. But item seven, uh, we have the warrants for the select board. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant in the amount of, uh, oh, it looks like $111,859.
Not quite. Dave, what's the 59 cents for?
Like a cup of coffee.
And that was a second from Mr. Coolidge, I think. Any discussion, any questions on these items? If not, all in favor of approval of the warrant, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Second warrant?
I'll make a motion to approve the Route 7 construction warrant in the amount of $14,708.65.
Motion for Mr. Wyman. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second for Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Any questions? If not, all in favor of the warrant as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay, item eight.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Coolidge moves adjournment. Is there a second? Mr. Wyman seconds. Uh, not debatable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. So that's unanimous. So then we do have a Board of Sewer Commissioners meeting, which we'll call to order at, looks like eight o'clock. Is that right? First item is to adopt the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board on the agenda as it's been submitted?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as it's presented.
Thanks, Mr. Wyman. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Coolidge seconds. Any changes to be made to the agenda? No. All in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. The ayes have it. Item two, approval of the minutes of May 11th.
Make a motion for those minutes.
Motion for Mr. Coolidge. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Wyman. Any errors or omissions in the minutes as spread? All in favor of adoption, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Any abstentions?
Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Bailey abstains, but otherwise for in favor. Okay. Item three, discuss joint billing. Dave, are you there? Yeah.
Sure. So this is, uh, the, I had a letter in your packet that Ray and Sue and Lou and Jackie and, I don't know who else. We've been working on this since our last meetings about doing joint billing to come up with a good billing schedule to let folks know what's going on. Um, and to really make it look like this is a letter that is, you know, a joint from us and the fire district. Um, I think, I think Sue and Lou and Jackie came up with some great stuff to put in here. We did roll the dates back and forth quite a bit, but this, these seem to, I'm going to say this and then the first bill is going to be screwy because of the way the taxes are working this year. But we tried to do the due dates on off dates from where the property taxes were. And, um, you know, one of the big things is we're hoping to have things run quarterly. So, um, it's going to be different. There's going to be a little, you know, it's like anything else. The startup's going to be a little tricky and within a year we should be running pretty, pretty, pretty smooth. So, um, I just wanted to, you know, bring this to you guys as a sewer commissioners to see here's what, here's what our end result is. Um, I think it covers all the bases and it's a start to get in this transition. So we're pretty excited about it.
Thank you. Uh, thanks for the letter. I did have one question, which was that, um, so we have fewer sewer accounts than the fire district has water accounts, right? So are we, we would still send out the bills for water only customers from the town?
Yeah.
I just.
All together now. So.
All right. So Ray, Ray and his group basically are going to furnish us the meter readings. We're going to supply bills to everybody.
So it's through, you know, it's a Nemrick thing.
Through Nemrick. Okay.
They're going to, Sue and Lou basically and Jackie, um, will be sort of the administrative side of that. And, and well, with Ray too. So, um, yeah. I, I think it's going to take a little getting used to, but they've kind of been doing that downstairs anyway. You know, it's always been the go-to place. So, um.
Is Ray planning to input the meter readings and Sue and her group are just going to generate a bill? Or is it going to be data entry on the town's part?
No data entry. Data entry by Nemrick. So that's what they do now. I mean, Ray, you know, Ray uploads his data to there. Now we're all talking together. That's what's been, to make this happen. So, yeah.
Well, I think it makes a lot of sense. So, so the goal is, um, this goes out when? In June? And it's due in August?
I'd like to do it this week.
It's happening this week. We're going to be sending first bills this week.
Yeah.
Any board discussions, questions? Or public discussion questions? Well, I think it makes, makes all the sense in the world. We've, we've talked about it some. I'm glad that we had the credential board with us last month and got to hear from them. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I, I'm, I think it's great.
Right?
What's that?
The letter and so forth is just for the select board's information as sewer commissioners?
Yes. And then we're going to send it out to everyone in the, the billing this week. So, um, you know, I know you guys have heard it before, but it's been great to be working with Ray and we're all working together. And I think that's important. So, you know, we're, we, we offered to help him with some of these meter swaps, you know, with, with Tim and, uh, with Tim Kingston. And so we'll see how that plays out. And I think we've got it. It's a, it's a good start.
Great.
And that's great. Yeah. Yeah. Um, I mean, we, we get a lot of calls on water bills. I mean, we always have and we just have to direct them to the water department. It's going to be much more efficient. We'll actually have the information to give people. We'll be taking all the money in and applying it to the account. So we'll have account history. I mean, we've already been fielding these calls and just giving them the phone number of the fire district. So it's just going to be far more efficient.
And for the, for the payers too, right? They'll, it always makes you feel better when you can get an answer when you ask instead of getting told to call someone else or, yeah.
Yeah. Much better customer service, I think.
Well, good. Anything else on this? If not, uh, thank you for that. Congratulations on getting it done.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for doing all the research so that, uh, I guess you apply it to the sewer first, right? And then to the water. So maybe we even end up with some less delinquencies. So that's great.
That would be nice.
Anything else before the sewer commissioners? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Sure.
Sure. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Okay, we're adjourned.